It is February 25, 2020, and we are here for our briefing. It is 2:01, and we are going to begin. We have one item under Executive, we have two items under Academics, and one under Business. And we're going to begin today with our Executive Services. And we have Ryan Hudak and sitting in for Chuck Bradley, we have Brian Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, we want to start off with the proposed nondiscrimination policy, which would be 1.27. And I'm going to jump right into the purpose of the policy. The purpose of this adoption is to ensure compliance with all applicable federal and state laws, Florida State Board of Education rules, board policies, administrative rules, procedures, and guidelines. In addition, the proposed revisions promote transparency and accountability. So to kind of just give you an overview of the Florida laws that we looked at in terms of creating this policy or ensuring that we're in compliance, you obviously have your federal laws as it relates to the Civil Rights Act. But we wanted to really dive in and look at the laws as they exist to make sure this is the most updated policy as it relates to anti and nondiscrimination. And you start off with your Florida Constitution, which basically states every student is entitled to an adequate, safe, high-quality public education. That kind of leads us into the Florida antidiscrimination law, which is Florida Statute Section 1000.05, otherwise known as the Florida Educational Equity Act, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, ethnicity, national origin, gender, disability, religion, or marital status. One thing I do want to add with respect to that policy, and Ryan will get into it in his presentation, is that Governor DeSantis and the House passed House Bill 751, which actually modified this policy and added antisemitism as a protected category. One of the things that they did, which was place it under race. And you'll see that in our recommended policy. Typically, with antidiscrimination policies, antisemitism would initially fall under religion. I think that would be what most people would think. However, the change in the Florida statute, which was also echoed by the President in his executive order, which again, I'll let Mr. Hudak kind of go into more detail on, is what formed the basis for us kind of putting that parenthetical so that it clearly distinguishes that that particular provision falls within the race as opposed to religion. And that's how the investigative agencies such as OCR, EOC are investigating it, and they're looking at it under race. So just to give you a little background on that. I also wanted to mention the Florida Department of Education Code of Ethics, as well as the Principles of Professional Conduct for the Education profession in Florida, which pretty much states the obligation to the students, require that the individuals shall not harass, discriminate against any student on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, age, national or ethnic origin, political beliefs, marital status, handicapping conditions, sexual orientation, or social and family background, and shall make reasonable effort to assure that each student is protected from harassment or discrimination. Again, you're going to see a lot of different provisions that kind of got added into what we had, and it was just to become consistent with our statutes and then again, federal law. That being said, I will now turn it over to Mr. Hudak, who will continue on with our policy.
Thank you. So the current policy, you can see currently, we do not discriminate on gender, race, color, age, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national or ethnic origin, marital status or disability. Like Brian mentioned, we have added different subgroups or categories in the policy to encompass a wider range of people. Not only that, also to allow them to know that the information is out there. If they believe that they are being discriminated for one of these categories, they might not know that it could potentially fall into a larger subgroup. So we decided to distinguish some and list them out. I'm going to go through one by one of the new ones that are added from this current policy now, starting with the first one. As Mr. Williams stated, it was antisemitism. It is in the Florida Equality Act already. And also on December 11, 2019, recently, President Trump's Executive Order Number 13899, basically now is considered race rather than religion because of it was on the rise of, basically antisemitism was on the rise of school campuses and colleges. Title VI protects people based on race, however, it does not protect on religion. Therefore, Title VI will not protect them if they had a discrimination claim. So under this executive order, Jewish people are now protected as being Jewish, being categorized as a race rather than a religion. The reasoning, this organization's International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, IHRA. The definition of what their antisemitism is, a certain perception of Jews which may be expressed as hatred towards Jews. Critical and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed toward Jewish or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property, toward Jewish community institutions and religious facilities. And Mr. Williams mentioned that these other entities that are doing these investigations also already categorize it as a race, and that's why we chose to include that as a race, so people know that they can file it that way rather than under religion. The next two additions, gender identification and expression. So under gender identification, it's what they identify as, which could be different from their birth assigned gender. And then gender expression is just how you publicly present yourself, which could be the clothes you wear, makeup, body language, or voice. And both of these are basically rights under the First Amendment of the Freedom of Expression, free speech. Title VII also prohibits this in employment. So if it was an employee, they would be protected under Title VII, as well as Title IX for both employees and students if they're being discriminated based on sex and any program or activity which receives federal funding. Also, yesterday, I had an opportunity to go to a gender conference where they discussed the potential liabilities of these if they are being discriminated. And there are very recent cases where school districts have been settled for hundreds of thousands of dollars because people are discriminated. So it is important to have it in there to know that if you are discriminated based on this, there are liabilities or sanctions. Another addition was pregnancy, which again would be Title VII and Title IX for both sex and employees. Military status we added as well, which could range from veterans preference, and also if someone needs to be deployed or is missing time because of military duty, they would be protected under that. Socioeconomic status is in there. And then linguistic preference, which is basically the use of language common to a specific ethnic group. The eighth one is genetic information. This comes from GINA, the Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act of 2008. It protects them from genetic discrimination, health insurance, and employment. So genetic discrimination is the misuse of genetic information is how they define it. Ancestry is where your ancestors or parents originated from rather than your own national origin. And then we included kind of a catch-all to encompass anything. If there's any other reason that is protected under federal, state, or local laws, they would be protected from discrimination. Another thing that's changed under it is the complaint forms and procedures. They are now located on the Office of Civil Rights and Equity webpage under the Office of Legal Counsel, where they previously were under professional standards and human resources. Complaints for employees will be submitted to the Office of Civil Rights and Equity. We also created a new email address that those complaints automatically get sent to or referred to when someone fills it out online, or they can call in. And any complaint with a student would go to the Office of Positive Prevention. Another thing mentioned in the new policy is the equity report required by the FEEA. Every year, there's an equity report submitted by the superintendent to the OEO. This includes any demographic information such as courses offered for students as well as hiring and retention for employees. So that also falls under this discrimination policy. And based on the language changes in this proposed policy, it would affect other policies as well. We would have to mirror that language in Policy 1.23, which is prohibition of harassment, 4.13, and then 4.14. So once this would be finalized, we would have to change these policies to mirror that language in the other ones.
And one thing I will add to what Mr. Hudak said is that, you know, with respect to those future policies affected, we have currently started the process as it relates to the bullying and harassment policy under the Jeffrey Johnson Stand Up For All Students Act. That is actually required every three years to go through a review cycle, which includes taking that policy to law enforcement, senior administrators, students, community groups. And I believe presently, we've already met with law enforcement. Ryan presented to the Student Advisory Group. We're in the process of, I think, scheduling some of the other meetings as well. We did take this policy to EDAC and got feedback there as it relates to the antidiscrimination policy. And so there is a collective approach to creating these policies. Obviously, you want to meet with as many stakeholders as possible in trying to implement a policy that can be shared equitably. And so that's what the focus of our office is doing, and Ryan in particular. And he has been working with Chuck Bradley, and unfortunately, he can't be here because he is at the All In Together Now Conference up in St. Pete. So if you have any questions, we will certainly feel free to ask.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, I have a comment.
Please.
I can't allow an opportunity to go by without pointing out how girls' flag football would help us with Title IX.
Somewhere.
Mr. Simmons is not here, and Mr. LaRose is not here, but I feel the need to say that.
It's working in Hillsboro.
I know, I'm hearing that it's percolating up. I just think it would be a great opportunity for our girls.
Ms. Jivinelli.
I'm sorry, we've never actually ever been introduced or met, so hello. The questions I have actually is regarding the civil rights phone numbers and the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Compliance. So are these the same number that would be for the hotline, or is this separate?
This is currently my office that handles any equity complaints that's coming in from the website as well. So if they submit it, it automatically goes to the Civil Rights website as well as mine, or they can call in. But this is what we have currently into my office.
I would think that the hotline would be a separate line that would go somewhere else.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, anyone else, questions? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I see that now complaints for employees go to your office, as we just sat off on some Civil Rights and Equity. Assuming that we approve this particular new policy, complaints that have already been submitted to the Office of Professional Standards, would they stay in that department if they were complaints that fall under this policy, or would they move to you?
Well, since they've been since November going to this office, so if there's anything that they did receive, they've been forwarding to my office anyways, the Civil Rights.
Well, how recently is recently?
Since November.
I mean, if it's still a pending investigation, would it go to your office is what I'm wanting to know?
Professional Standards has already been investigating it prior to the Civil Rights Office. I would believe they would continue that. However, I know that some have been submitted to my office, and because it falls under this umbrella, they just refer it to me. So your question is if it's anything prior and they've been investigating, I would believe they would complete that or refer it to me if it falls into this category.
So now that we have something specific about, says the School Board of Lee County, Florida prohibits retaliation by any district personnel against a person for reporting, filing, or being a witness in a discrimination, et cetera, starting in line 29. Is it possible, then, that a finding by professional standards might be resurrected, let's say, under this particular policy if someone feels that he or she has been retaliated against because they were a witness in a discrimination or harassment? Is that a possibility? Or is there a line between this is now and anything that happened before is then?
If you're referring to anything in the past at all, I would say if that person, there was a finding, for example, and the case is closed, and that person believes that that treatment or that discrimination is occurring, then I believe the best route for them would to be to open a new complaint through our office.
Okay, they could resubmit. And my final question is, Ms. Jivinelli touched on the hotline and the policies that we've been working on for over three months. How does this particular policy fit in with the policies that the legal department has been working with RSM and our board attorney? How does this, is this in compliance? Is everything lined up so that there are no potential conflicts?
I'll refer that to Mr. Williams. To be honest, I'm not really privy with the RSM information.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams?
No, that's fine. Through the chair, this policy, again, I think the whistleblower policy is more directed at fraud, mismanagement, and waste, whereas this policy is focused on nondiscrimination. And for what it's worth, we already had that existing policy. We're just, this is just an update to the policy, again, to incorporate some of the changes that have been reflected in both state and federal law.
Yeah, I understand what you said, but I am looking specifically at the portion of this new policy on retaliation.
And I was going to jump in on that one, too. Retaliation is a separate claim, so you have a claim for discrimination.
It's in this policy.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is that the retaliation claim, as Mr. Hudak stated, would be submitted through the Office of Civil Rights. Again, my understanding of the whistleblower hotline or policy, that would fall under fraud, waste, mismanagement, which again, is separate, it's a separate cause of action, as they say.
I understand, but somebody that submits in the hotline, whenever we get that part finished, they would be protected in addition through this anti-retaliation paragraph in this policy. Is that correct?
If it's based on one of the protected classes identified, so either through federal, state, or local board policy. So if it falls into that category.
Okay, and again, I'm looking specifically at retaliation. Thank you.
And I think maybe Mr. Quick can jump in on that one as well, because I know that there are certain criteria as far as retaliation, whistleblowing, and all of that.
Yeah, I mean, there's certain requirements that I'd circulated to the board that were what constitutes a whistleblower under the statute. I hadn't seen this, I haven't seen this proposed new policy yet, but I would agree with Mr. Williams that to the extent that somebody was a witness or reported something that related to a discrimination that would fall under this policy, and they feel that they were retaliated against and they fell under the whistleblower, then I think it would implicate both policies, assuming both policies are in fact adopted by the board. It would implicate both of those, I think, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kittens?
I think she had her hand up first. No, you don't. Okay. Yeah, I have a question on the 29 to 31 as well. And Mr. Williams mentioned that it only has to do with certain people in a protected class, and yet that's not listed here. So do we need to have an asterisk or a caveat that shows at the bottom who is covered by this? Because otherwise, it's a blanket statement that everyone that witnesses, you know, should not be discriminated against. So if you're saying that this is only for a specific group of people, and I don't quite understand that, but if that's the case, then it should be listed that that's what it's for.
And again, through the chair, this is, that provision that you just mentioned is in the Policy 1.27, and specifically states prohibits retaliation by any district personnel against a person for reporting, filing, or being a witness. And then here's the most important language in that sentence, "in a discrimination, including harassment, charge, complaint, investigation, or lawsuit." So it's very specific as to this policy and any of the claims that would be made under this policy. The whistleblower policy is its own policy, and again, I believe it references retaliation or language in there that would impact that policy. That being said, in conjunction with what Mr. Quick just said, if for some reason there is an allegation of fraud, waste, or mismanagement that somehow falls into the discrimination category, then they would also be able to utilize this provision to make a claim for retaliation.
I understand that, but what we're saying is that it is overlapping. So why not just clarify it with an asterisk and something at the bottom that refers to the, what did you say, 1.27? I'm not sure what you just said.
That's it?
So if it's 1.27, all I'm saying is have a caveat in here referring to that particular statute.
That's it.
If I may, Madam Chair, I think you could probably add a line if the board is seeking clarification, you could add something at the end that refers it to, limits it so that it's as set forth within this policy or something along those lines. I mean, I'd be happy to work with Mr. Williams if he'd like to, probably a few words to ensure that it, any confusion within lines 29 through 31 is cleared up so that it's only within the, it only deals with issues within this policy.
Thank you. Ms. Jivinelli.
And actually, that was what I was going to suggest, is that, because you just said a few minutes ago that you had not seen this.
Correct.
I would feel more comfortable to know that you've, that our attorney has seen this and approved it and made any changes that would be significant. So I'm going to make that recommendation that that be done.
And just so the board's aware, your policy...
Confused as to why you haven't seen it. It's been on board docs for a week.
He said he has not seen it.
I'm asking him why he hasn't seen it.
It wasn't provided us for our review. It wasn't, I apologize, I didn't see it on board docs. I saw the...
I apologize, I'm going to have to jump in there. Actually, it was...
Wait, 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 let's get back, please. Sorry.
It was reviewed by his office. Ashley, I can't think of her last name, reviewed it and actually provided comments on it, which we spoke to her via phone the other day. So it was sent to you. I think it was farmed to, you know, your office typically responds with, can respond with another attorney other than yourself. And so she responded, and we communicated with her specifically.
Okay, and Brian, I'm happy to communicate with you in advance. I mean, these are issues we can discuss in advance, but I do think there is confusion clearly amongst the board, some of the board members, and I'm happy to work with you to ensure that that confusion is cleared up on this. But, so the board is aware, you have, there are specific requirements as to how a policy is adopted, and this, there are notice requirements. This is not for a policy to be adopted now. There are, this is a briefing meeting, but there are 28-day notice requirements and then 14-day workshops. So this is the initial one, and I apologize for, if Ashley had reviewed this, I had not, this was not something I had seen, so I apologize for that.
And as you said earlier, they've been going out and sharing this with different committees as well. So thank you both for clarification. Are there any other questions that anyone may have?
So are we...
He's going to...
That he's going to add a caveat?
Mr. Quick's going to get with Mr. Williams and bring it back. We're not voting on this or anything. This is just looking at it.
This is a first appearance. Thank you.
This is going to everyone else. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
One other, for Mr. Quick, to what extent might it be, I'm asking for your opinion, appropriate to look at this policy at the same time that we're looking at the three new policies that would be the ones that were suggested by RSM?
I think it would make sense. I mean, considering that there is the possibility of overlap, I think it would make sense to do it together, especially since we haven't started the process. I mean, this is the very, very beginning of this policy.
Yeah, so then, given that opinion, which I respect, I would like to see that this policy go with the policies, the other three, that RSM suggested, because I do see a possibility of overlap. And to bring forth all four at once, and I would wait on this policy, and when those policies are ready, then we'll take a look at this one. Does that, does that make sense as to look, excuse me, does that make sense, Mr. Quick?
I mean, I think it makes sense if that's what the board's wishes are. I think it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Are you finished, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
You were going to make a statement.
No, what I was just going to say is that RSM was instructed to, or asked to, get with our attorneys to share information from other districts for all those other policies. They were not supposed to make them. You all were supposed to help make that happen. That was way back in like September.
Yeah, we've been working with RSM on an ongoing basis, as well as staff, to work with them to draft. And, you know, staff has raised a number of comments that we have addressed through revisions that have been circulated a few times. I know that the most recent draft was circulated, I believe, at the end of last week, which was provided to the board as well.
Ms. Kittens?
Okay, my major concern with adding something else to the process of the hotline is that it continues to push it further and further and further back. I believe at this point, we had agreed on it back in the fall of last year, and we need to be moving forward. If we add this, and I apologize, Ms. Vaughn, but if we add something else to it, this is a pre-briefing. That means we've got the briefing, we've got the vote, we've got all the things that go along with this new policy, and that's just going to add in a tremendous amount of time. And I really am concerned that we're stalling on getting this hotline going, and I am suggesting we just move forward and get it done.
Ms. Vaughn?
Actually, my thought in this was just the opposite, that by putting this particular policy with the other three, that it might serve to move forward with those other three policies. And also, on a practical level and a very logical level, I'm thinking that there might be overlap, and that by putting all four policies side by side, our end product will be a much better product because everything will be in sync. That's where I was coming from. Again, it's my thought, and it's, you know, whatever the board wants to do, but I, like you, feel that the hotline, that whole thing with that policy has taken way too long.
Thank you. Anyone else with comments?
So what are we looking at time-wise if we do look at all together? Mr. Williams?
Well, right now, we're...
Well, right now, we're the conversation in the agenda is regarding this, not RSM. It's this policy right here that they've brought up to us. So that's what we need to stay focused on and what they have before us. Because we could bring a whole slew of things in here, but that's not on the agenda.
And with respect to this policy, I would only say that because it impacts both the bullying and harassment complaint procedures for harassment and discrimination, as well as the prohibition on harassment policies, that, you know, again, I don't know what delay is going to exist with respect to the other policy. I don't. That's in a completely separate house and being handled by a variety of different people. As it relates to this policy, we do want to move as quickly as possible so that we can again update those other policies that would be impacted by the language contained in in the non-discrimination policy. So, you know, again, we do have it set for, I believe, we do have set to go to a first reading and then come, you know, come to a second reading for purposes of instituting board policy. I just would hate to tie two policies together. And I'm all for working with Mr. Quick to add whatever language you feel appropriate to feel comfortable with respect to the the two policies together. But I would have a concern about delaying this policy in particular, just because of the nature of its what it covers and who it covers.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for them?
The only thing is, is combining them, this has a process we're still working through. That's gonna and that's gonna delay. That's gonna make, and I don't, I think you can't really, that's the whole issue here is we have to go through the process to get this in place anyways. And there's, you know, it's gotta be presentations and so forth. So we have to think about that. If we were combining stuff, I don't, then I think you're gonna, you are gonna delay the whistleblower hotline even longer.
Correct. Well, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is academic services, and we have Diplomat Elementary School with Ms., I'm not sure, it's Mrs. Vertrees?
Yeah.
And could you please introduce your guests?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
So we're here for Diplomat Elementary School, a elementary school of about 1,014 students down in the North State, and I am the teacher of this school. I also know this the word nerd. And we'll talk about that in a few minutes. And this is one of my fifth-grade teachers, Deborah.
Just pull it over closer.
Deborah Zerullo. Deborah is a fifth-grade teacher extraordinaire. She's also our math contact for leading and learning and just an all-around wonderful teacher who also helped write our school improvement plan. So I brought her with us. So I'll tell you more about this in a few minutes. Let me get our presentation up here. For the last 27 years, Diplomat Elementary School has organized learning around a theme every year. And our theme this year is Ready, Set, Grow. And as you'll see in our proverb here, we do believe what we are doing today with these children holds all the tomorrows for all of us in their hands. Our school vision is to be a quality school with high expectations of learning for all. We were part of the NEA Choosing Excellence Grant, which emphasized quality. And it has been something we started that about six years ago, and it is something that has really driven our culture and brought us all together on the same page. When we talk about learning for all, we mean all. We have, we want our kids to learn, but we also have learning opportunities for parents and, of course, for our staff and the administration. Right, Deb?
That's right.
Our mission is that Diplomat students will be dedicated and responsible learners and respectful and compassionate individuals, because we believe it is our mission to teach the entire child. We want them to be better readers. We want them to know their math facts. But if we really want them to be ready for tomorrow, they must embody these character traits. This is what we need in tomorrow. We need responsible learners, lifelong learners, and people who are caring and respectful. Wouldn't that be great if we could help everyone get there? So we work at it. Because we are a quality school, every single classroom has a mission statement. These are some examples right here of some of the classroom missions. The children help write these. It's done within the first week of school. They come up, the teachers ask them, what is important to be able to be a successful learner? They come up with key words, and it's crafted into a sentence or two. These also become classroom rules, where the teacher, if someone's being a little disruptive, can say, wait, does that help meet our goal? Does that is that respectful? And it drives it. The one on the far right is a kindergarten classroom, and the teacher had every child draw a picture of themselves and glue it on to show their commitment to the mission statement. We, I'm not gonna go too far into quality. You might know much about it. It's driven by data and by goal setting, but it's not dead data. It's not like just a number on the wall. It's data that kids look at, that we look at. Teachers talk to me, they talk to each other. The children are aware of their data, they progress monitor, and they can change their goals. If a child said, I want to be at 65%, and they're hitting that, they can move it up. It is a live process to help them become owners of their own learning. I think it's really important to look at, we also, part of quality is to have the basic needs wheel, that's in every classroom. And children can express where they are. Do they need fun? Do they need power? Do they need survival? We have had kids put a clip on survival and learned that they have just become homeless or that something very scary is happening in their home. Again, we teach the whole child. Student-led conferences is something we bring parents in on, and children explain their own learning and goals to their parents. And that's an opportunity for parents to learn what we're really doing. We don't believe that like a B in math should just be a B. It should be a child should be able to say, I'm doing pretty good, but I'm still struggling with long division. You can see it here on my graph. That's how we make the data come alive. Okay? Why isn't it going forward? Try. Ah, there we go. Well, I think we're invited here because last year, we did some had some good gains. We've been in, we were in A school for 17 years, and two years ago, we dropped to a B, which about broke our hearts. Not that there isn't more than a grade to what we do with children. But if you can, if you look at our chart, you can see what killed us in 17, 18. A lot of our scores were very good, but it was the learning gains of our lowest 25% in reading. That was a very terrible number. When you have only seven numbers to put into an average, 33 is going to kill you. So we said, we want to fix this. And we put a goal of 50%, and we far exceeded our goal. By bringing that number up, it brought up our learning gains overall and our proficiency. We were very, very proud of that work we were done. So we're gonna touch on what we did and how we're trying to sustain that this year. Of course, all of our SIPs are based on the ABCs, attendance, behavior, and then the classroom goals. So I'm gonna touch one thing about behavior, because we talk a lot about restorative justice. We really do work on trying to, again, work on the whole child to change behaviors, not just be punitive. This is something we developed at our school. We call it the BIF, the Behavior Intervention Forum. The top is what the teacher fills out. This is if a teacher is having some behaviors, they've not been able to work it out with just the child or the parent. They fill out the top. The administrator who works it fills the middle part about what we did with the child, interventions we want to see. But the bulk of this is the bottom part, which the child takes home, reflects on what has happened, fills it out with their parent, their parent signs it, and sends it back. Generally, this takes care of the behavior. We don't have to write a referral. We don't have to do a big punishment that takes them out of the classroom. This is truly getting partnerships with the parents to work on something that we want to change. Last year's reading growth came, a lot of that came from these six things, our targeted grade-level intervention time. We use the new curriculum maps that were put out by the district, our school-wide weekly academic vocabulary. We believe in rigorous learning, but we think it needs to be fun. So we have little vocabulary contests throughout the year. Kids try to can win word nerd pins. We added reading to our after-school clubs, and we put a huge emphasis on writing. All of our teachers went through professional development to help raise their writing scores, which did go up. What were yours?
Yes.
I think our average was what, a nine?
An eight.
An eight, okay. Out of 10. That was pretty good. And the, we are not an I-ready school, but we really like the Florida Ready workbooks. They're very rigorous. So we used our own funds to purchase those. And from second through fifth, they're now using that curriculum along with some of the other curriculum pieces we have to just make sure we have that rigor. So what are we doing this year? Attendance. Last year, we really went after the attendance of our lowest 25%. This year, we're looking at all the kids. We want to get them in school. If they're there, they'll have a much better chance of learning. The last time I looked at it, our average absence was 6.7 days, which is pretty good. So we may hit that 10, and I hope we can even go below that. Behavior, we wanted to decrease our school suspensions. We are a school that has a classrooms for children, separate classrooms with behavior issues. So that's where some of our suspensions came from. We've relooked at how we do some of that. This year, thus far, we've had only three days of suspension at our school. Our classroom goals, we really wanted to maintain the proficiency of our students because a lot of kids became threes for the first time last year. When we put that big push on, we want to keep them there. We did notice that we had a little bit of loss in the lowest 25% in math, so we want to bring that back up. And our science dipped by four points, and we want to bring that back up. And that's also part of the district goal, to bring the science up. So our strategies, we are something new we've introduced are the Marzano prioritized standards and proficiency scales. And it's also a way to grade for mastery. So again, we know what every grade is comprised of, where are the children strong, where are they lacking, so we can target what they need. So what we're teaching is what they don't know, instead of sort of reteaching what they already know. We've done professional development, and we're using the Ready Florida curriculum again. In math, we're trying to really boost our hands-on activities. We always have had after-school math tutoring, and we have our math vocabulary. We've found that academic vocabulary is one of the things that syncs our ship with kids, especially children who come to us who are English-language learners. So we have really incorporated vocabulary learning throughout our school day. Every single day, kids walk up to me with the words of the week, and we feel very positive about it. We've been doing this for two years, and I'm happy to say that we are one of the few schools that have met their target, in fact, exceeded their target for ESSA for all our subgroups. So they're all doing very well, and we believe our vocabulary emphasis is a big part of that. Because they don't hear certain words at home, even if English is spoken in the home, nobody's saying dividend. Okay. Deb, give us a second. When we had the hardest time learning that word, they want to tell me it's in the house. No, 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 no. You gotta tell me what it really means. For science, again, get their hands on it. I love the one, the lower right picture, these were second graders who made little models of their insides and wore them around. Again, learning but fun and remembering because you've done it. You didn't just hear it, you did it. Again, lots and lots of the root words. You'll notice a lot of these are root words, we because so much of science is Latin and Greek root words. And then we really got our head around our Inspire Science curriculum. It was new last year. This year, we're able to really kind of use that to better purpose. And so these are our overall goals for this year. We hope to be an A again. We want to hold our proficiency in ELA and keep those learning gains up. We want to raise our learning gains for our lowest 25 in math to at least 50% and get our science back up to 64 where it was before. So those are the number goals, but I think you've heard about what we really want to do, which is to plant that garden, to deliver skills and character traits to our children that will help them be successful in no matter what tomorrow brings. Thank you. That's our presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have a couple. Very good job, and I like you with your hat on.
My art teacher made it for me, isn't it, Pat?
Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Couple of questions. On your BIF data, what was the highest of type of incident in behavior?
The BIFs are for things that are not like a violent thing. So we very seldom have a fight or anything. The BIFs are more for a child who is constantly calling out in class or so rather than doing a referral, we get them to talk to their parent about it. Or maybe they're playing too rough at recess. We had a little girl who pulled somebody's arm at recess. And so, you know, we talked to her about it, and then she went home, talked to mom and dad, and they they wrote it down. And it just helps them really understand what the behavior was.
And to make a plan for.
And to make a plan individual. Okay. And real quickly, I wasn't aware that, and maybe this is a question for academics, but schools can choose to opt in or out of I-Ready?
Well, you there, we don't have the whole I-Ready. We don't, we don't use it instead of STAR for our progress monitoring, but we can buy the workbooks.
Okay. But I mean, schools can do that.
No, they just, they're piloted schools.
Pilot program.
There are piloted schools that have the whole packet.
Okay.
We don't have that, but we liked the workbook, so we bought them.
Right. Okay. And then lastly, your lowest score is that 33 score. You mentioned that you brought it up, and congratulations on that. And you also mentioned about attendance. Was attendance one of the main reasons for that, that the students were not there in order to get instruction?
When I looked at that score, because, of course, I was traumatized when it came out, although I had an inkling it wasn't going to be strong, one of the things that I noticed when I looked at who those children were and why they didn't make gains, and they did have a higher average days absent than the rest of my general population. So we started something called the Rise and Shine Club, which we've continued this year, which they come in every day that they're there, they meet our guidance counselor who sits in a, I mean, school counselor, excuse me, who sits in a central location. They get a sticker, they each have a page, and if they fill that sticker so they don't miss more than a day in a month, they get a big donut party. And the Krispy Kreme helps us with those donuts, and I am telling you, kids will come to school for donuts.
I would come for Krispy Kreme.
So. But I think the most important thing that happened with those children is they were children that had missed, some of them as many as 30 or 40 days.
Right.
Now, when you miss that many days, you're not making friends, you're embarrassed to come to class because you don't know what you're, everyone's doing, the teacher's kind of looking at you. When they started coming, they started loving school. And kids who would walk around with their head down were suddenly saying, hey, Mrs. Vertrees, and telling me their vocabulary words. And the difference was unbelievable, which is why we tackled whole school attendance this year.
And was there a high number of our ESOL students in that group?
Yes, absolutely, it was, actually. Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Was it, Ms. Mary?
Yes. So I have one question, and then I have a comment. When you contact the parents, what's the response in general? Like, is there a high?
Most of our response is really good from the parents. We get a few that are irritated with us or that just don't ever call us back. If the parent never, we can't make contact, and they don't fill out the bottom of the BIF, then the child brings the BIF back and does it either with the teacher or the administrator.
Right. And we have a second copy in case they don't bring it back, then we can still meet with them.
Because we still want them to reflect.
Yeah. So I want to comment, two of my great-grandchildren are students there, so I get an ongoing report about what happens at Diplomat Elementary. And I want to thank you all for the work you do to provide them such a great learning environment.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Cool.
Pretty happy place.
Yes, you are a pretty happy place.
Anyone else?
Anything else?
Thank you so very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wonder what's worse. Mary, I wonder what's worse, having a parent? Okay. And next we have, is a board member? Mariner Middle School with Ms. Gold. Please.
Either way, I don't think they would tell us.
I didn't know I was supposed to bring a hat or an entourage.
That's three points, huh?
All right. So I was Dr. Pruitt's AP for eight years, so I know the most important Kagan strategy is brevity, so I hope I get my three points back.
Hi, Ray Gold. I am the very proud principal of Mariner Middle School.
Ms. Gould, I am the very proud principal of Mariner Middle School. This is our demographics, and our ESOL population is very diverse. So, last year, in our monolingual class, we had five languages: Hebrew, German, Russian, Vietnamese. I mean, these are the languages that come through our doors: French, Creole, Portuguese, Spanish. So, our teacher has quite the challenge on our hands. People think it's just Spanish, but we have quite the variety at Mariner Middle School. What's highlighted in green, these were our scores from last year, we went up in every category except in science and our acceleration points, but what's highlighted in green are areas where we excelled above the district and the state, so we were excited about that. One of the teachers had 80 percent proficiency, and the other one did not. So, that teacher had some issues and went back to the charter system. We have a new teacher this year, and I know it's going to be a lot different. One thing that I did do when I hired the teacher who had 80 percent proficiency, she was a reading teacher and then became a science teacher, so it's a tremendous difference. With our acceleration points, we dropped because we did not put as many students in algebra. They just weren't ready for it. So, it's what was best for kids. With our attendance, we, they're tier-three kids. I went through and looked at the history of each student, and this is a chronic issue with our students, elementary school, looking at their history. So, we need help with that. We had Tammy and Shelley come in and talk with some strategies with us about that. Where we knew we could make a difference was with our tier-two students, and we have a Triton Time cycle where our social worker and our MTSS person work with them. And Cycle Five, we saw a difference specifically with those students with some strategies that were working with them. Our tier-one students, our mentor teachers focus with them, just by, "We missed you when you weren't here. You're important to our class. You're important to our mentor group." So, we were excited to see the change. It's not a huge change, but it's a change in that data. Our reading, with our sixth grade, it's not as high as we'd like to see it, but we had a sixth-grade teacher who left us at the beginning of the year. We had a tough time getting a replacement, but we do have a teacher who's there now. And so, we are confident that we're going to see some changes with that. And we have academic coaches coming in, working with our seventh-grade department. If you've ever taught middle school, they lose their minds in seventh grade. It's the toughest grade to teach. So, we have some strategies and some support with the seventh-grade teachers. It always dips for us in seventh grade, but we've got Cassidy Kay coming out, Stephen McGinley, working with our teachers. It was the hardest grade to teach. And then, 10th grade too. They go nuts there. So, we're excited to see some strategies that they are helping our teachers with. Our math, there, we've got some, especially our eighth-grade math always does really, really well, and we're close to our goal, the progress monitoring with our math. And we're moving up only 18 more percentage points to make our goal. And like I said, our science, if we stay on the same trend, we will exceed our goal for science. We have double-blocked some of our students, not all of them, but they're well on their way to making their goal. Okay. So, this is where our school is different. We have Triton Time, and you can see, these are, this is Classroom Creator, and our students are on a two-week cycle, and it's based on standards. So, every two weeks, they get a new class for the first 30 minutes every day, based on what they need, based on standards. We have a lot of students from out-of-state, out-of-country, so we don't get, we don't get the gain scores. We have to base it a lot on proficiency, so students get the in-house tutoring that they need when we trap them at school. Our staff gets this every semester so that they know what the cycle is. Everybody has to be on the same schedule. Everybody has to be putting in the data the same, so that we all are working together to make sure that this works. We are the only IB school in the West Zone. We just had our reauthorization visit. We got our, our report back. We only had four matters to be addressed. Two were scheduling matters, which are easy to fix. And then, two items are items that we have to discuss with IB. I'm not too sure, and I have a meeting, a phone conference with them on the third to talk about some specifics that we need to address as far as unit plan goes, those kinds of things. So, we'll talk with them on the third about that. The biggest thing that IB gives back to our students, because it is whole-school in the middle-years program, is the social part and the well-roundedness for our students. I don't know if you guys saw the story on NBC, or it was Wink, a classroom of girls putting together kits for other girls at our school. If they need it in the clinic, they can go down and get it. We made 360 kits for girls, and they got donations. And it's pretty common around our school, everybody helping each other, so it's pretty Eighth graders have to do a community project as part of the IB program. They have to do it because it's part of IB, but if they don't, there's no consequence. Probably two-thirds of our students do it just because it's the right thing to do. And the projects vary from sending books to Africa to cleaning the school campus. It's pretty neat. And then, there are plaques in the cafeteria of all the students who've completed an IB project, and we've done it for the past five years. And so, they get to come back and see their name on the plaque in the cafeteria. And then, they also talk about how they continue the community work when they go on to high Again, our Triton Time, it's either intervention or enrichment. It's the first 30 minutes of the day. If it's intervention, they are re-taught a standard that they didn't get during the previous two weeks. If it's enrichment, we trick them into learning. It's all standards-based. One of the enrichments was scuba diving. Nobody asked me where the pole was, but they talked about pressure and depth and all different things. They will even bring up their Chromebooks to us and say, "I cannot go to enrichment. I need algebra. Please put me in algebra because I don't get it." They will advocate for themselves, or they'll say, "You put me in Language Arts, but I need civics." It's really a neat thing, and they'll show their charts in the Classroom Creator. They know what they need, and they value this program. We also have Mentor Time that we have incorporated into it. It's the first three days of each cycle. It is based on grade level and gender. We had it just by grade level initially. Oh, actually, we had it by, we had it three different grade levels, and it was never, we thought that the kids would kind of mentor each other, and it never took off. Two years ago, I put it by grade level and by gender, and it is so meaningful to kids. They ask for it to be changed from two days to three days. I wanted it to be a cocoon, that they would have these groups of students to help them with social media, with riding the school bus, with whatever middle-school issues that came up. This is a breakfast that they had together. They were with their mentor group for three years, and it's, one, when we started it, one teacher said, "I want the bad girls. I want the boys that don't come to school." I didn't want that. I wanted it to be a mix of different kids that they didn't necessarily see or interact with. So, it's a variety of kids that they have the opportunity to get to know and get to know for those three years. They stay with the same teacher and move forward. And one teacher was crying that she's going to leave her girls, so it's pretty neat. We don't, do not OSS at Mariner. It's just not part of the culture, unless they have to go to Success Academy. If it's that egregious, that's the only way that they are out-of-school suspended. It's just, my teachers now expect that. And when I hire, I let the teachers know that that's not what will happen, so they understand that. And that's it.
Okay. And I will say, I really appreciate the fact that you were able to come to EDAC and present to them. They were very impressed by what you had to share with Ms. Duncan, so thank you for that. Is there anyone else who has anything to say? Ms. Fisher?
Yes. Ms. Gould, I just want to say, my favorite part is that you don't have OSS at your school because kids only learn when they're there. So, thank you for making it possible for that to happen for your students.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Ms. Morgan?
So, I just wanted to ask, how is it that you have no out-of-school suspensions? What happens? Because we do hear that student behavior is a problem, and in some instances, getting What training have, has your staff done, or, you know, what professional development have you done, or do you have space set aside? How do you handle?
So, we started with, we created a base, we called it BASE, and it was an in-school alternative to suspension program. So, they would go to our own alternative school on campus. And then, teachers kept saying, "Okay, fine, they're in BASE, but can I have them for math? Can I have them for civics? Can I have..." Well, no. This isn't working if you're going to keep pulling them. And it just evolved. We had two boys in the cafeteria. One kept making racial slurs. Both boys are white boys, and one boy got really angry with them, and he spit at him. And they both stood up, and the one who was spit on, his friend said, "Don't fight. Don't do that," and pulled them out of the cafeteria, and they sat in separate areas, brought them in the next day because neither one could talk that day. And they reflected, and we talked through it with them, and I wasn't sure that they were going to be able to sit in the reflection room together the next day. And they were in my office and talking it through, and both, without us really having to say anything, said, "I was completely wrong. I am so sorry. What a stupid thing for me to do." They got up and hugged each other, went down to, then they decided that their IB project should be working to come up with an idea about raising awareness of racism, and they're working on this project together. And I think, I think it's because of the Mentor Time, and I think it's because of Triton Time, because everybody is working at the same time. There's nobody on planning at that time, so all the teachers see all the kids at the same time. Like, not at the same time, but everybody sees everybody's students. So, they're our students, and the Mentor Time, because those groups are so diverse, you get to see so many different kids, and it's just, it's just the culture of the school. Two girls were screaming at each other in science class about two other girls that had an issue, and the other girls were like, "What are you doing?" And one of them came out all heated, yelling at me in the courtyard. So, I, we also have two calming rooms in the front office. I said, "Just go sit, and when you're ready, come find me." And she did, and later, when they were calm, they were like, "You don't have to be friends, but you can't behave like this." And they both were calm and went and apologized to the teacher for disrupting her class and causing chaos, and then they went back to class. I explained what self-defense was. It's not pummeling when you are hit. It's, you know, pushing off in a corner. It's just a lot of talking through things. That's what we do.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah. I was interested in learning a little bit more about the IB program that you have, and I think it's wonderful that the kids in eighth grade are doing community projects. So, could you give a little bit of background on how that came to be at your school and pluses and minuses on the program?
So, when I became the principal, I got a phone call, "Do you want to be an IB school?" Uh-huh. And so...
Just out of the blue or from the district?
Yeah, from the district.
Oh, okay.
Yep. I needed an attractor. My school was the most under-selected.
Ah, okay.
Yep. And we had a lot of issues, and so, it's been a work in progress. And so, we were authorized 10 years ago, and then, this is our first reauthorization. So, we decided, when we revamped our mentor program, that in sixth grade, they do a whole group, volunteer group. They do a project. Seventh grade, they kind of divide it up and do smaller groups, and then, eighth grade, it's just two or three kids that choose their own project. So, they're supposed to start to finish, come up with a project.
I think it's great. Are any of the kids, so, you know, I understand what you're saying, you're using some of the things that IB does. Are there any of the classes, you have advanced classes in each grade level?
Yep.
Like honors class or a pre-IB or something like that in your school?
Right, yep. We have gifted at every grade level, and then, all of the students learn the IB vernacular so that when, when they, if they choose to go to the IB program at Cape High, they already have, they already understand the vernacular, the, some of the requirements that IB has.
Yeah, and that's great, and I've said this before, I would love to see every middle school have one of our advanced programs, because I really think it's important. I don't know if you follow your kids, if they go into IB in high school, but that's so important, that they already have an idea of what is important in IB, and as you said, the vernacular and those kinds of things. I think it makes the transition into upper-level classes, the actual advanced classes that they get in IB in high school. I think that makes for a smoother transition. So, I think that's great that you have that program.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to tell you a quick little anecdote. I had the opportunity to have lunch with four middle-schoolers the other day because of Black History Month, and as we were eating, and I said, "What is, you know, what is the hardest thing about middle school?" They, and there were six, a couple of sixth graders, some seventh graders, and eighth graders as well. And their answer was, "Seventh grade." And the kids even said, "Oh, we lose our minds in seventh grade." And then, we kind of get it together. One little girl said, "Well, I didn't lose mine, but I had to fight really, really hard." So, I wanted to let you know that. And to finish by telling you, your calmness and your demeanor is excellent for middle school.
Oh, thank you.
You have, it, I did it for one long year. And you have to have administration that is calm, cool, and collected to be able to handle all the, you know, that goes on. So, excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any more? Thank you so very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next, we will have business services. Ms., Dr. Amy Desamore, Michael Gateway, and Jeff Wolf. And if you're somebody else that's not on the list, let me know.
I'll open up your presentation and then let you sit.
Maybe hungry.
You're hungry?
Sure.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board.
I'm not Jeff Wolf, but I'll play one in a movie someday. I'm Bill Blend, the engagement shareholder. Jeff wasn't able to come with me today, but he sends his best wishes to everybody. And I'm here to present to you the final communications, as well as go over highlights of the financial statements for June 30, 2019. And as you're all aware and received, and probably have read through the Financial Statement CAFRA document, that's a fairly large document, has a lot of information in it. That's financial information. We, we don't get into that detail, but I just, I'll start out by just generally asking, are there any specific questions about the document itself, or anything about the audit process, before I get into my communications?
Does anyone have any? Not at this time, thank you.
All right. So one of the things that we've got to do is, we've got to communicate with governance at least twice during the audit process, once at the beginning and once at the end. Obviously, as your external auditors, we would come to you if we had to at any point in time, should something be brought to our attention, we feel needed your attention or your direction. Fortunately, in this process, it was a smooth process. And that really goes to staff's cooperation with us to engage in the audit process. And so there really wasn't any reason to come to you in the interim, in the interim, and so we're here at the end. So to go through it, our audit responsibility, basically, that's to follow the, all the audit standards that apply to a school board audit. In the state of Florida, that includes the AICPA audit standards, the yellow book or government audit standards, the Auditor General's Office, who also has a specific compliance supplement as it relates to school board audits. And so we did perform our services in accordance with those standards. Management's responsibility, while I can boil it down to a nutshell, basically saying, cooperate with the audit, there's really a lot involved in that, obviously, being on time, scheduling with us, closing out the books, really engaging and answering our questions. So while that's a very quick way to say it, there's a lot of work that goes into it by staff. We do evaluate the school board's internal controls, but we're not auditing them. So we do an overall audit or review of the internal controls for the purposes of gauging what areas we're going to test during our audit process. And so that's how we deal with internal controls, and as well as significant compliance areas that relate to the financial statements. Significant matters, I'll go through the reports in a minute, but there were no other significant matters to report to you. Management has provided us, provided us the appropriate management representation letter, which basically, again, goes back to saying that they've cooperated with us and provided us the information, and that's accurate. And the information they provided to us is, in essence, truthful, if you will. And then the audit schedule, we're here, we actually, obviously, due to timing schedules with board meetings and things like that, the actual audit is issued back in January, but this was the first available meeting for us to come to present. So just don't think that we just finished this thing up yesterday or anything. So with that, are there any questions about required communications?
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
So we get into the deliverables. The first thing, and some people say the most important thing, is the audit report itself and the financial information. And we can tell you, you received an unmodified opinion, or what is deemed to be the highest level of assurance that any public accounting firm can provide to you, meaning that our audit and the results of our audit indicated that the financial information from our perspective is accurate from a materiality standpoint. The next report that we provide to you is that report on internal controls. And that's required in any yellow book or government audit. We did that, as I mentioned earlier, we do evaluate internal controls. In that evaluation, we had no findings to bring to your attention related to internal controls over financial accounting and reporting. The next report that we're required to do, you receive federal funding, quite a bit of federal funding, actually, and so we evaluate your SIFA, your Schedule of Federal Financial Assistance. We may, we identify what we deem to be major programs, and we audit those major programs. So we don't audit everything on the SIFA, we audit the major programs. There was one finding in this particular area related to Pell Grant. Really, that was, and why we've identified as a significant deficiency is because it was really somewhat brought to our attention generally, that the school board, the administration had been looking at this issue. And I believe the board is aware of the issue as well. So there was a good evaluation done internally, but because of some of the things that came up during that process, we identified that as a high-risk program, audited, concurred, if you will, with the internal results that does result in us reporting on it. The next item that we're required to provide to you, and this is related to the rules of the Florida Auditor General's Office, provide you a management letter. We had no comments in that. And then the last thing is our accountant's report on several compliance issues related to Florida statutes, and we had no findings in that report. So those are the deliverables. And again, I would just ask if there's any questions related to those.
Anyone have questions?
I have one.
Ms. Javonelli?
So the, the deficiency in the student financial aid cluster, as you call it, is that detailed in your report?
Yes, it's in our, it's attached to our Schedule of Findings and Question Cost.
Anyone else, please?
Sorry, was there?
I just want to see if anyone else-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
My apologies.
No, you're fine.
Next thing, I'm just going to go through again, there's really a lot of financial information. I encourage you to look at the document. I, I always encourage anybody, public and elected officials like yourselves as well. If you don't look at anything else within the document, I always recommend the management's discussion and analysis. It's a high-level overview of the financial statements, put things in perspective, gives you prior year, current year comparative, and gives you information as it relates to changes. But with that, I'll just do this high-level overview. So you can see here, this is what we call the entity-wide position of the school district. And it's really meant as best government can be put in accounting standards that are comparable, if you will, to the private sector or a public company. And you can see here, you, you know, you have assets in what we call deferred outflows. And I could do a whole class on deferred outflows, if anybody'd like to do that someday. Talk about what that means, and try, we could try to figure that out together. But you can see that your, those exceed your liabilities and deferred inflows. And then you have your net, net position, so that's your equity, or if you will. And if you look at that ratio there at the bottom, and that kind of compares to, in the, in any business or organization, if you can get above one, one and a half in your current ratio, that's generally deemed to be a good financial position. So you can see here that the district's current ratio is in a strong position. Current ratio is current assets divided by current liabilities. Looking at the breakdown of your net position, obviously, the largest item there is your invested in capital assets, so the building that we're sitting in, and the various other infrastructure, school buildings that the school has, as well as all of the assets of the school. You have restricted for various purposes of 204 million there. That unrestricted deficit, several years back now, all Florida entities that are involved in FRS and have other pension plans were required to put those long-term liabilities on the books, which previously in government accounting were not required. That resulted in this deficit. And that's just probably going to carry on for a very long time, unless the FRS pension plan gets fully funded sometime in the future. And then you can see the total net position there.
If you will. Do you have a question?
Before you go on too far?
Sure.
Cliff notes version. Back to the slide on deferred and inflows and outflows.
Okay, sure.
So in, in my basic mind, I'm thinking deferred means it's just not done right now. So deferred inflows, would that be something like, something we're anticipating coming in?
They, I mean, you've really nailed it there. It, it's an event that's going to occur in the future, whether that's an outflow of resources of the school district, or an inflow to the school district.
And is, for example, the, the half-cent sales tax?
It's, it's not related to that. Most of your deferrals are related to pensions. So they're related to pension costs that are going to be paid out in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Looking at, again, very high-level, obviously, of your revenues and your expenses and your net increase, and you had a positive increase in the current year. Getting into the general fund, which in any governmental entity is the main operating fund, where your major, main resources go. So you can see here, you have assets well in excess of liabilities and deferrals. And then you have your fund balance or your equity section, and you can see that's made up of those categories there. Non-spendable, restricted for various purposes, assigned, and then your unassigned, which is, and you'll see on the next slide here, we like to compare your unassigned because theoretically, and I do want to put that in quotation marks, theoretically, that's available funds, if you will. When, when I talk about governments or two governments, I always try to point out that, you know, that's kind of, I always analogize it to, you know, how much money do I like as a human being, having in the bank? If I lose my job tomorrow, something goes wrong, or, you know, my air conditioner breaks down, you know, do I have any excess funds to kind of cover emergencies? So when I talk about unreserved fund balance, that's how I look at it. Every organization looks at it different, and every organization has a different balance there. But what you can see is you have about 11.2% as of the fiscal year-end of your expenditures for the year. So I, I would deem that in pretty good health there. And with that, I'll open up for any final questions or comments.
Ms. Kittens?
Okay. You can tell I was not a math student. Okay, on the slide eight, where it says liabilities and deferred inflows, what's confusing to me is liability is something that we owe, and inflow is something we get in. So can you clear it up?
That's how I, that's how I actually always remember. Where does the deferral go? Because it's the opposite of what you would deem it to be.
I knew that.
Yeah. Okay. Really, what they're saying is you don't have that inflow now, therefore, it's a liability to you.
Okay.
I guess is the best way I can explain it.
That was excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? That's it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Human resources, we have none. Public comments would be next. Is there anyone here for public comments?
And I have no blue card, so I would just recommend opening it formally for the record, and then we can close it, since there's no comment.
So we have open public comments, and we have closed it. Thank you. Board member comments. I will start with Ms. Fisher?
I have none right now, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
So I've been visiting schools over the last couple of months, and my comment is this. When I came into this district seven years ago, almost eight years ago, I went around and visited every school. And people were, were very gracious, and they showed me their good teachers and their I, I, just having started through this cycle in a, in a, in a serious way, again, as I said over the last couple of months, I am stunned by the difference in what I see in the schools. I walk in, and principals sit me down, and they show me data. They talk about where things are going, what they're doing, what hasn't worked, what they're rethinking. They are excited. They are absolutely convinced that they are going to do better in the coming year because they have a plan. And thinking back on what I saw those years ago, I realized that there was an inhibition about having me in the school, because there really was a lack of a plan, a lack of understanding, well, not, I won't say a lack of understanding, there was, well, things aren't going well, and I don't know exactly what I'm going to do, and I don't know what leadership is doing, and I am struggling. And at that time, you have to recall that the state had, over a several-year period, continued to change standards. We had a lot of turnover in school leadership. There was just a lot of stuff going on. And I just don't know how to say it, except that I just feel really excited by what I see in the schools. I know that schools struggle. I know we have some very fragile schools. And I, and I have some comments I'd like to make in workshops going forward about some of the things that we're doing to impact the fragile schools. But overall, I'm just, I just, I love the, the sense that one can take risks, that we are making a difference for kids, that people are working together for kids. It just, I don't know. It's just a totally different school district to me. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli?
I don't really have anything. I mean, I've been, I've been going to schools, too. I've got pictures for tonight, and nothing really major for now.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'll wait until tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
Um, I, I believe I will wait. Are we going to, for good of the order, bring up the other, the attorney situation? I'm just making sure.
Yes, we were supposed to.
Okay. And other than mentioning about the middle school situation that I talked about before, it, as, as you go into schools, I think most of the time, we sit down with adults. If we could make it a point when we visit schools to arrange to be able to sit even for 15 minutes with students at that same school, it, it will give you a whole other perspective of the school. So in our visits, and I know everyone goes and visits schools, and I just suggest that because it, it really is an eye-opener.
So I will just add to my comment. One of the things that I loved that didn't happen in the past, and it is happening now, is that you walk into a classroom, the kids aren't bothered. You walk into a classroom, and you walk over to a child, and you say, "What are you doing?" The child shows you what they're doing. They're very proud. They know what they're doing. Even the kids are, well, the fact that I can just interact with the children that way is a huge difference from where we were before. So thank you for making that comment, Ms. Kittens, because I did want to make it clear that I am talking to children in a classroom setting, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with what I'm hearing and seeing.
I mean, it's very different from, my, my great story about that is when I was teaching, and the door, the bell rang, the kids sat, take, took their seats, the door opened, and there were people from the district that came in to observe me. And they walked around and spoke to one little student, and they said, "So what are you working on?" He says, "I don't know. I've been trying to get out of this class for a month. Can you help me?" So, so it has changed tremendously.
Yes, who's next?
Okay, so in keeping with our protocols, I will give my board report during our briefing. I did tour Manatee, and Scott Lee Master, I'm sorry, Principal Lee Master is unbelievable. He's so smart, and he's so smart. And what I noticed in that school, sort of bolstering what you just said, Ms. Morgan, is the, the teachers, too. You walk in the classroom, and they're happy to have you there. And, and it's not like, it's, it's not like the, trying to focus my comments. There was one classroom in particular I went into, and I wish I could remember her name, but you all know how bad I am with names. Her level of understanding of how to teach children, along with her love for children, was striking to me. It, it was completely amazing that you could have that combination of professionalism and knowledge and love for children in the same human being. And I saw that throughout Manatee. It was very, very impressive. Ms. Vaughn and I attended the Cambridge Awards at Estero High School, where kids who are being inducted are recognized, and kids who are graduating are also recognized. You know, all of you who do these things, this is the favorite part of our job. We get to go and be with kids and families and celebrate academic achievement. Finance advisory, there was a great discussion on health insurance, why we are where we are. If you have any questions at all about health insurance and the benefits that we provide to our employees, I feel like that's a great meeting for you to listen to, because some things were said in that meeting that after three-plus years on the board, I hadn't understood as clearly as I do now that they were said the way they were said in that meeting. So if you have time, watch it. And finally, on Thursday, I will be traveling to someplace in Florida... I don't know the name of the town, to watch our soccer state championships, and Mariner High School will be playing for a state championship on Thursday night. And it's going to be like 40 degrees, so just so you know, I'm sacrificing for you, Mary, going there and being cold.
Say hi to my granddaughter. She'll be cold, too.
I will say hi to your granddaughter, and I will be wearing Uggs and a fuzzy coat. Then the next day, I get to go to someplace else in Florida, I don't know exactly where, for our United Basketball State Championship. Fort Myers is playing in that, and when you think United Basketball, think our... Oh, what is the name? What is the name of the classroom? They have one at Riverdale where they... Life Skills Classroom. Our Life Skills kids will be playing for a state championship from Fort Myers on Friday, which I'm really super excited for. I've not seen that before. That is my report to the board.
And where is that?
Like the Unified Sports?
Yeah, it's at RP Funding in some town in Florida.
Oh, that part is out of town as well?
Yes. They're both out of town, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. My report is, I've been... Most of us, a lot of us, have been attending the... All the excitement with the Golden Apple teachers, and they're all so worthy of it, and it has been really satisfying to me to be a part of that and seeing that. Been visiting schools as well. We were out south today with the EDAC Committee, and they were very impressed with what's going on out there. Everything is going on out there. So there's so much. And again, we were with the students and having a lot of conversations with them, and they were asking us a lot of questions. So it was nice, you know, having the kids in the AdVit class asking questions of the business community. So I really thought that was a good plus for us. And that is all that I have to share. And so next would be our board attorney. Do you have anything to share?
No, just one thing to follow up on what Ms. Kittens mentioned about the attorney discussion. I just want to, just for a procedural matter, as you had mentioned under good of the order, the way you guys had done it yesterday, because you were in a workshop, was you had continued it, so you would need to close your briefing today, and then you would restart the workshop, and we can get Susan, who does the minutes for the workshop. So I just want to make sure procedurally, it's being done that way. So it's... For all intents and purposes, it's the same thing. It's just closing this meeting and reopening the continued workshop.
Are we going to have a little break then, maybe?
Yes. Okay, so...
That's a good idea.
Dr. Pruitt, do you have anything to share?
No comments.
No comments? Thank you for being here with us.
And how's Dr. Atkins?
I hope Dr. Atkins is...
How's he doing?
Continuing to mend.
Oh, okay. Okay, so with that, so you know, other, I will adjourn this meeting then. So then, I guess Ms. Fisher will reopen the meeting from yesterday as the workshop?
Workshop.
Is that correct?
Yeah, because it was done under the workshop, and the way you guys ended it was to continue it, so we can get Susan to, I guess, tag in, and we can tag Mary out, and...
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
That sounds good.
Tag team.
Do we know? I've heard before, but I'm not sure.